I was almost gonna turn them. It's updates, thank you. But then what turned on?
Now I understand why people used to really kind of attract companies to go to.
Go ahead and I'm gonna call this meeting to a... The special meeting, today's date is May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. That is approximately four thirty PM in the afternoon. And, if you want, you can move pretty for whatever time of occasion. Statement of the duration.
That's obvious. They have a following, once again, we want to thank you for waking us up this morning to a brand new day. We thank you for allowing us to come together one more time. We ask that you be with us today and give us the good decisions that we need to make on today to benefit our city. We ask you best, every heart, every soul, and every mind that is present on today, even those that are not able to be here. Bless them in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Have I pledged religions? I'm pledged to both religions. You do what I... I'm a member of the United States of America. And two, from a Catholic, to be honest, to stand on one inch. I never thought, in the middle of the world, with a religion, it would just fall. Does that ever take you back to the women who stood? I used to love that every morning. Welcome, everyone that's here today. We called this special meeting, we have a few things that we need to talk about, I think. The first one, of course, is when did we... Christine Maria, is that a page behind? I'm gonna go ahead and... So, in reading, and commissioners, I've handed out an article to view. I've got more articles, but it's a lot of paper. If you need any. In reading through this, it appears that we all know that Aldi made a deal with Southeastern Grocers, and they purchased four hundred of their stores. It started back in twenty twenty three. We were marching twenty twenty four is when it actually closed. There's been an agreement where Southeastern Grocers, the CEO has brought together a consortium of investors to buy back about a hundred and seventy of those four hundred stores, as well as also, I believe, about a hundred and seventy of local stores. In doing that, they wanted to preserve the Winn-Dixie brand, my understanding is. But it appears that from the readings, and although it hasn't been confirmed, and I did start this conversation, and somehow said I was an alarmist, and I'm typically not an alarmist, but I also know that what happened with our pharmacy has had a huge impact on not only our community, but the Laka, Kimona, all of South Putnam. And that just happened, I mean, it just happened. We didn't really have an opportunity to fight for it. And my understanding that Aldi does not want to come into a neighborhood where it's going to have a negative impact. And so I think we need to use our voices. And so I did ask the commission, and commissioners, thank you for coming together today to discuss this.
Do you have a question? We did the election, did we two walk home?
I'm hesitant. Thank you, Commissioner DeVito. Is there anything on our toes?
Is there money out, since I apologize, ma'am?
Commissioner Luisa Vida?
Present.
Commissioner Lori O'Wolery?
Present by zoom.
Yes, zoom. Commissioner Linda Moore?
Here.
Commissioner Cynthia Barton?
Here.
And our city manager, Christina Murray?
Here.
Mayor Myers?
Here. Could I just bring up one housekeeping issues? So, because of special circumstances, Commissioner Lori is present by zoom. I just want to make sure, if he can't hear us for any reason, is, how is he gonna be able to let us know? And can we ask him if he's able to hear us, okay?
Commissioner Lori, can you hear us?
I can hear you if you speak into the microphones.
Okay, well, we will definitely try to speak into our microphones.
Did he hear what I... Did he hear my question about whether he could hear us, I guess?
Well, I asked you if he could hear.
Yeah.
Did you hear Commissioner DeVito?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you can hear Commissioner DeVito.
Right.
Now, or you don't have them, you don't, you're not monitoring it from there. You're not able to monitor it from there, are you, if he was to raise his hand?
No, ma'am, but he can control it.
Okay, and you can unmute yourself, and by all means, if you want to unmute yourself at this point, you're part of the discussion. So just, you know, speak up and say, "I need to say something, please, say."
Yes, ma'am.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, there is a list that was, that went out on my Florida Retail. And it has the list of those that, in Florida, that while they're saying they're unconfirmed, we are unconfirmed. It's... And, but it's my understanding, these are the ones that they are looking to keep and not sell back to the Winn-Dixie brand, or the Southeastern Grocers to the consortium. We are on that list. Colakka is on that list. I did notice that, I don't believe, Brandywine is not on that list. Which, meaning if you know Brandywine, yeah, I'm delighted. So that would be the, probably the closest one to us at this point in time. Aldi is, of course, a fine, a fine store. We're not in any way saying anything negative about Aldi. It's just that it's not a full-service store. And here in our area, in South Putnam, the only full-service store would be about forty-five minutes in each direction. So that means if you need a birthday cake, you need a graduation cake. I spoke to Winn-Dixie the other day, and at that point, I think they had over thirty graduation cakes that had been ordered. You're gonna have to go elsewhere. And the hours, typically in Aldi, is their hours run anywhere from eight-thirty in the morning until eight o'clock at night. Some of them are nine in the morning till eight o'clock at night. That would be an impact, too. So it's a lot of things that are gonna have an impact on the community. We thought this was an opportunity for us to talk about it and what we can do. And also for the public to weigh in on this and share with us your thoughts on it. You know, our Winn-Dixie is not just a grocery store, it's our community. It's our community. We meet and greet people there. We are so blessed to have the manager that we have there. He, anytime you ask, he reaches out and tries to help out in any way he possibly can. Right now, they employ, I believe, about eighty-three. People, those include managers, that Aldi's foot, the Aldi, their model has, I believe, about thirteen, maybe plus. But that's about it, so we have some job, quite a few job losses. It would be significant impact on our community. And I felt, and I hope my fellow commissioners, I hope you feel the same, and we together can reach out and let them know that they want to build an Aldi here, that's wonderful, but please keep our Winn-Dixie here.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a statement on this, I think it's very important, okay? I put it together because I have a tendency to start wrongly, wrongly, like, unkeep my thoughts straight. This is my thought. Generally, a city commission should not be involved in the day-to-day operations of a private business. The city's role is primarily to regulate and ensure compliance with city ordinances and zoning laws, not to dictate private business decisions. Allowing the city commission to heavily influence private business decisions could create a conflict of interest with your personal or political preferences could unfairly favor one business over another, potentially creating an environment of favoritism or corruption. As a city commission, we have oversight related to zoning, building permits, or other matters that indirectly affect business operations. Our primary function is to ensure compliance with established laws and regulations, not to dictate which businesses should operate where. For the city to interfere in Winn-Dixie Aldi decision would be no different than the city deciding what's on the menu at a local restaurant. Therefore, I'm opposed, okay, to an ongoing conversation or resolution on this matter.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to
Yeah, absolutely.
continue the discussion. First of all, mayor, thank you for bringing this to our attention. Thank you for the research that you've done, and just today, the second revised agenda with Packet contained a potential resolution that we would possibly adopt on this subject, communicating concerns to both the Aldi's company and to S U Grocers. I don't think that you're an alarmist at all. And I'm a free-market person myself, but I don't agree with Commissioner Burton that economic development and the interest by... Economic development is not a concern of a city commission throughout the state of Florida. City and county governments are very attentive to economic development in their communities. It's it's a big responsibility, and just as much as zoning. Some municipalities and counties actually employ someone whose responsibility is economic development. And several years ago, when we considered having a CRN manager, which we have now, there was my strong feeling that we needed to include in that position responsibilities for economic development, and hopefully having somebody with expertise in that. So, that being said, I don't think it is unusual at all for a city commission to be concerned when a major anchor retailer is going to have a large change. And I, to me, I think this resolution is going in the right direction. I mean, it's just, you know, what can I say? The public can't see the resolution, it might be helpful to read it. I, you know, the hardest thing to do is to draft something, and if you drafted this, or whoever drafted this, I think it's excellent. I just got to read it late this morning. Took a while for my brain to get going. I do have some questions about it. Just, I guess, technical questions, wording questions, questions about where some of the information came from. Just in the spirit of trying to make it the very best resolution that it can possibly be, and do what we want to do. But I think that if we ignore this situation, I think that would be an economic detriment. So, I think it's our responsibility.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lori, do you have anything that you'd like to say?
I, my... Commissioner DeVito, I thank you, and I agree. I feel like that we were put in these positions to look out for the community, to be the voice oftentimes of all of you out there. And that if we stay silent and we do nothing, then we get what we get. And I believe with the pharmacy, we've seen the impact that that had. And I hear about it constantly.
And I spoke to that when the prospect of the sale came up. And there was my there was my strong fear that there would be negative impacts, both economically and just in the quality of life in the community. And, I'm sorry, I jumped in. Can I just say one thing? As you know, if you lose establishments and you lose retailers, when people go out of town, then they take that opportunity to shop elsewhere. And I know that happened. I lived for seventeen years on Davis Islands in Tampa, which was a planned community that was modeled on the small towns. And it, at one time, that lost a grocery store. And that had a very negative effect on the businesses around it. And it took many years for that trend to turn around, but anyway.
I believe Crescent City is a fine example of what happens when you lose a main grocery store.
Well, it just...
And that happened, I mean, that happened here.
Yes.
And that's what happened to all the businesses that were here.
Right, I mean, part of economic development, the presence of business can, the presence of the right business can encourage other businesses, and the absence of certain services can definitely have a negative effect. But I'm sorry, I interrupted, you know, my apologies.
I didn't interrupt you when you said that, no.
Okay, well, that's...
I just, as in that spirit of where you were going with that, I feel like Crescent City, back in the nineties, when they lost the Miller and Miller grocery store.
Exactly.
Winn-Dixie came in shortly, and I mean, a few years after that, but if we lose that full-service grocery store, you think about all the people, and I think, did I give you the population list?
Okay. Wait, no, you did not give us the population list.
So, here's a population, here's the population list. This is based on the first twenty twenty census.
That was, that was what I was looking for.
But when you look at this and the amount of people that South Putnam, there were sixteen thousand in South Putnam, Northwest Volusia, which a lot of those come here, and we've got about close to nine thousand, maybe more at this point in time. You have all of those that come to the store, that come through Crescent City. What will, what will bring them to Crescent City? And even if they come into town just to get some convenience items at Winn-Dixie, they run out of sour cream, or they have to go get some of this. They'd have to, they'd come here, they drive through our town. Oftentimes, they buy their gas here, they'll go to Ace, they'll go to, you know, on some of our restaurants, they'll find other things. But if we don't have that full-service grocery store that they're looking for, you know, are they gonna go elsewhere? The same thing with the visitors that come to town, that go to the Laka, that stay on the river, that go to Georgetown, that go to Fruitland. They come into Winn-Dixie to get a lot of the staples they need while they're here. What will bring them to Crescent City? So you have to look at the economic impact of this, too, because a lot of things they buy, you know, sales tax, there's sales tax. All those, all those cakes, those specialized cakes, those are taxed. They're metal products, they're taxed. And that goes into the sales tax, that goes into, you know, comes back to the city in better place. So some of that, you know, the economic impact of this is Aldi, again, is a smaller footprint. My understanding, and I know the one over in Atlantic Beach, Neptune Atlantic Beach, it's been closed for three or four months while they go through a conversion. The one in Mormon Beach, I believe, has been flooded for about nine months when it goes through a conversion. So as it goes through a conversion, what do we do during that time, split? Yes?
Great, this is great data. I have some specific questions about the resolution.
Commissioner Lori, if you, if you have anything, then I'll read the resolution and then you can ask your questions.
Right, because I, and also I have some questions about the list. But I guess I was gonna say, first of all, how do you do, how do we want to proceed? Because right now, we don't have a motion, I mean, yes, about Aldi's list.
Commissioner Lori, did you have anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to echo your, the mayor's comments, as well as Commissioner DeVito's comments. You know, this is a very important business in our area. This store means a lot more than just groceries. It employs people, largest employer in our, in our city limits. And then if I saw South Putnam, this is, as you said, this is not just a Crescent City issue. This is the entire half the county and Northwest Volusia and everywhere else. So I mean, I think it's very important that we need to at least voice the city's, you know, or the city commission's opinion, and that we put our, you know, our weight behind that, because we have to do something, so.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. If that's okay. And so the public can hear what the resolution says, so that when we open it up for public comment, too. So it's Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash oh-three, City of Crescent City Commission, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Crescent City, expressing strong support for retaining the Winn-Dixie store located at one-one-one-five North Summit Street, Crescent City, Florida, and opposing its conversion to an Aldi location, providing for transmilitary development parties and providing for an effective day. Whereas the Winn-Dixie store located at one-one-one-five North Summit Street, Crescent City, Florida, has long served as a vital community grocery store, offering accessible full-service options to residents of Crescent City. And whereas the Winn-Dixie store has provided jobs, supported local events, and contributed to the social and economic fabric of our community for many years. And whereas the City of Crescent City has recently become aware of plans by Aldi and Southeastern Grocers to potentially convert the existing Winn-Dixie location to an Aldi store. And whereas while the city recognizes the fine establishment the Aldi brand brings to a community and the value of competition and economic growth, the potential conversion or closure of our community's full-service Winn-Dixie will negatively impact local employment, reduce consumer choice, and eliminate valued services currently provided by Winn-Dixie, including its selling, bakery, meat, liquor, floral departments, and broader community support and involvement. And whereas the city recognizes a large number of residents within the city limits and that reside in the South Putnam County area, as well as the Northwest Volusia area, that for many years relied on the Winn-Dixie pharmacy, where they prescribed pharmaceuticals, and they extreme hardship for recent closure of the Winn-Dixie pharmacy. and the extreme hardship the recent closure of the Winn-Dixie pharmacy has placed on our older residents and those with limited transportation. And whereas the City Commission strongly supports maintaining a diversity of grocery options and retaining businesses that have demonstrated a long-term commitment to the residents of Crescent City, now therefore be resolved by the City Commission of the City of Crescent City as follows. The City Commission hereby strongly urges Southeastern Grocers and Aldi to reconsider any plans to convert or close the existing Winn-Dixie store at one 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 five North Summit Street, Crescent City, Florida, and instead maintain an operation as a full-service Winn-Dixie to continue serving the needs of the community. The City Commission directs the city manager to formally communicate this resolution to Southeastern Grocers, Aldi corporate offices, local and regional economic development agencies, and any other appropriate stakeholders. The City Commission encourages continued dialogue among the city, business leadership, and the public to ensure decisions reflect the values and priorities of Crescent City residents. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon adoption, passed and adopted by the City Commission on this twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five. So that's the proposed resolution that we currently have before us. Um, it's also, I, I think when you read through all the various articles, it looks like they hope to have all their conversions done by twenty twenty seven, Aldi does. Someone asked me about a timeline, and said that's the only thing that I've been able to pick up um through the, the various articles.
Um, I would like to move that we adopt with potential amendments.
Okay.
Resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh three.
Excuse me? Did you say this is a proposed resolution? Oh, are we going to consider the, the public comment?
Oh, yes, we will, but we have formalities that we have to go through first.
What if you, if you approve this?
We won't, we won't vote on it until after we open the public.
Okay.
Thank you. Continue.
Okay. I move that we adopt with potential amendments, Resolution number twenty twenty five dash oh three, um, regarding um the Winn-Dixie store potential conversion to an Aldi location.
Okay. I have a proper motion.
Do I have a second? Okay.
Okay, you have a motion and a second? And you have some questions, Commissioner DeVito?
Um, I do. And first of all, I just want to make clear the resolution, as you read it, um, does not say that we do not, does not say that we want to discourage Aldis from coming here, instead we have concerns for the economic impact of eliminating your full-service Winn-Dixie store and replacing it with an Aldi. Does that, would I have that correct? Okay, so, um.
That's, I, I know that's, that's the one in there that says that whereas while the city recognize the fine establishment the Aldi brand brings to a community.
Yeah, right. It's, well, it's my understanding, we're not in any way suggesting that Aldi should be allowed to come here. Um, this issue came up very fast, and you've done a lot of research, we're just having the chance to look at it, and of course, because of sunshine law, I can't call you up and, um, talk about it, this is our first chance. So number one, I think when we brought this up at our regular meeting, um, I suggested that maybe to contact the chamber and see if they had any help for us.
I did.
Did, did they have any suggestion?
She was gonna reach out to um, um, retail, um, yes, she.
Retail staff?
Yes, retail staff.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have a blank. Um, I did, I spoke to Laura and I spoke to Mark.
Okay.
Uh, Mark about it. Mark, of course, is our economic development.
Right.
For Putnam County. Um, Laura said there were some things that we could do, um, if, if it came down to that. There's um business retention grants. Um, I did some additional research to look at um what they pay in their abdominal room and their tangible taxes, um, as it currently sits as a Winn-Dixie. Of course, there, you know, what they pay and um their utilities is, um, that's, we, that's not for the public, that's not for us, that's not for the public. So I don't have those standards.
Right, right.
Um, but I, but we did have that. Um, it's under a Crescent, Crescent Corp Chester. Um, is, and it's, um, looks like they paid uh seventy one thousand five hundred and ninety-two, I think, in their state, in their abdominal room last year.
Right, Winn-Dixie did. Okay, so, um, you did have that in your guidance.
I did, I did. She said there, she would look into it and she would get back with me. Like I said, she was gonna reach out to retail strategies. Um, I didn't hear back from her today. Um, she said there were some grants out there that you could, that you could possibly, you know, offer. We're not at that point.
Right, right. So, and I, I'm just gonna keep going down on the list.
Okay.
And I guess, but the, the chamber did not weigh in, uh, and we were on our own as a city as far as drafting a resolution or.
Yes, they did not, they did not, that, that, while they, they are very um, um, concerned and they understand our concern, at this point in time, they have not weighed in.
Okay, they, they didn't say this, a resolution was a bad idea?
Um, no.
Or expressed that?
No.
Okay.
Um, Mark had, Mark did have some concern that it was rumored, and I shared with him about what was in the paper.
Right.
Um, I mean, what was in the article.
Right.
And it shows as unconfirmed meaning that they don't have the update yet.
Right.
And it's my understanding their permits have been applied for, they will have to apply for permits, but they would have to go through, um, city manager would have to sign off on those before they can even accept, um, the permits.
Okay, but as far as we know, they have not applied for a permit in Crescent City.
At this point in time, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um, so just, and this is kind of a little side detour, but um running my eyes down the list, um, of potential conversions in Florida, um, I don't know if you have a sense of this. Um, I'm, I'm wondering two things. Um, one, would we be one of the few locations potentially listed that would be left without a full-service grocery? Because what I'm seeing here is, like, maybe very, um, many of the locations on here are much larger urban communities. Um, for example, let me just find Miami. Um, Miami obviously has multiple options. Jacksonville, Jacksonville has multiple options. Um, Quincy, I don't know, um, just off the.
Quincy, really, I don't think they have, they're publics. I'm trying to remember if they're publics.
I, I don't know, I'm just going off the size of the, um, maybe Monticello. Um, but when, my second question is, um, are the, is SC Grocers, because they have investors, would we be, for example, if we stayed at Winn-Dixie, would we be one of their few stores in a large geographic area, or would they still have stores near us? I mean, I'm just wondering.
Well, they're based out of Jacksonville.
Right.
So SC Grocers is based out of Jacksonville. So I don't know, we don't have the list of the ones that they've been.
That they will keep, okay, we don't have that. All right, but, and then back to, um, the actual resolution. Um, number one, um, just reflecting back uh on Historic Reservation Week, um, something that I thought was maybe missing from the resolution, I think, which paragraph is it, that it says, um, uh, second paragraph, has provided jobs, supported local events, and contributed social and economic fabric of our community for many years. Really, um, for over half a century, Crescent City has been commercial, well, really, uh, since, for over a hundred years, Crescent City has been the commercial center of South Putnam. And I would say for over half a century, we have been sort of a full-service grocery store and that economically benefits the community.
And do you want, do you have some, or did you wanna add into that? I was being Winn-Dixie specific.
Right, but I'm saying, but this community, Winn-Dixie is the successor to.
Others, right.
To other full-service grocery stores, but essentially, the economic function of Crescent City has been to serve the rest of South Putnam, and we have long had a, a full-service grocery store. So, um, there's that. And then I thought the, um, I thought the population figures that you just gave us were important, um, as well as I tried to calculate, um, the distance to the nearest potential full-service grocery store, with the Harveys, and if these black codes got on my list.
I didn't want to see the Harveys is on this. I didn't, obviously, I didn't look.
I really don't.
I looked, I was focusing on the Winn-Dixies, I did not look for the Harveys.
Cause that, I think.
Cause that's part of, that was part of, right, of their mind when they bought them.
So, I mean, to me, and I'm sorry.
But I don't believe that Southeastern Grocers, it looks to me like it's not understanding it was just the Winn-Dixies. It was not necessarily, it wasn't a Harveys.
Right.
But those Harveys were included in that.
So essentially, um, I think it's important to emphasize that our community for decades has had, even prior to Winn-Dixie, has been the site of a full-service grocery store. The population figures I added, the ones that you gave, just roughly, for um South Putnam and North Volusia, it's almost thirty thousand, and we have grown considerably.
Okay.
Um, and then, um, really, there would be thirty miles to the south and twenty-two miles to the north, um, that would be without a full-service grocery. So those things, I think, um, are important to mention. And you mentioned, um, you mentioned, but it's not included in the warehouse clauses, that Winn-Dixie serves not only families and permanent residents, but learned residents and tourists who are rent. That, that full-service option, I think, is very important to people, uh, the significant number of tourists who come here.
Okay.
Um, and it's a tall order, if you want me to go in the back room and write some verbiage, I don't know. Um, but I think the economic, I think the economic impact part, to me, is important. Um, I'm trying.
Winn-Dixie wouldn't wanna do an additional warehouse. I think you'd wanna fit that possibly in an additional warehouse.
Sure. And then, uh, just a technical question, um, that says communicate to the relevant parties. Um, do, do we as yet know who those people would be? Do we have a line on that?
I have, I, I have some, I have some addresses, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I have some addresses.
And, and maybe retail strategies can help, and the chamber can help with that. Okay, I just wondered, um, how difficult it was gonna be to figure out who to send that to?
No, I've got this, I've got this context.
Okay. So, for example, um, where it says be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Crescent City, the first paragraph, um.
It needs to be added in there.
What does?
It, it, be it resolved, it's missing.
Oh, okay, there you go. And then, what's the kind of that, but, and the first, um, paragraph?
Yes.
Um, the last sentence, instead maintain its operation as a full-service Winn-Dixie to continue serving the needs of the, and I don't know, should we add an entire South Putnam and North Volusia community?
Um, and you are now also the needs of the City of Crescent City, um, residents and those in the surrounding. South Putnam and Northwest Volusia areas, how's that?
Um, I think, I think that's helpful.
Okay.
Important to be is, and then the last concern I have is, um, well, uh, I thought that the next, the very last paragraph before the, uh, effective date resolution, where it says the City Commission encourages continued dialogue among the city, business leadership, and the public to ensure decisions reflect, um, the values and priorities. I wondered whether values and priorities should be the economic needs of Crescent City residents, and then as well, um, it would be my hope.
Needs and priorities, I would think. Yes.
Okay. Um, it would be my hope that we would offer to work with Aldis and Southeast Grocers in the future, um, to try to answer any questions, um, give them information about our community, and, um, as we've mentioned, about grants or anything else we can do, you know, to facilitate the very best development in, um, grocery services that can be offered in this area. So somehow, you know, I, I would hope that we would include that in that equation, that we wanna work with them.
Oh, yeah.
But it, I'm not sure it says this. It says business leadership, should I say, including Aldis and Southeastern Grocers.
You can add that, if everyone is okay with that. Commissioner Lauren?
Um, cause I, I certainly think that it's important for us to have the dialogue specifically with them.
Okay.
But I think, I think whoever did this did a smashing job. It's not easy.
Right, the resolution's not easy.
It's not, it's not.
Um, okay. Was there anything else? Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Lauren? Commissioner Lauren?
Uh, I agree with the changes and, and would like to commend you on the wonderful job writing the resolution. I think it was well done.
Thank you. Um, do you have any changes that you would like to make?
I know, it's fine. I like the additions that you've made. I think it covers it.
Commissioner Burton, I know you're not in support of this, but is there anything that you would like to add or see in this resolution?
Uh, the only thing I really kinda like to add is that, you know, it, it seems like lately I'm hearing, well, you know, you make a decision and you say, but you know, um, we don't wanna, we still wanna be friends with Aldis or whoever, whoever you wanna be friends with. Um, you know, you just shouldn't be in the middle of it. It's just like, you know, it's all.
So let me ask you this, if we're not in the middle of it, who should be in the middle of it? Who should speak for all the residents?
I believe, okay, and, and.
I just.
I think all the residents should be in the middle of it. That's who I think should be in. I mean, we, we, in the hall right here, it was just people from Crescent City. You've included a list of people from Volusia, you've included a, a list of people from South Putnam, I guess, um, all of these people. Um, I'm a believer in going out protesting, I'm a believer in writing letters, I'm a believer in making phone calls, I'm a believer as, as a United States citizen, if, if you want something done, that, that you get out there and get it done. I'm not a believer in having, and excuse me if you, um, take offense to this, having, um, a person that reads a blog about what may happen, because this has not happened yet, it's, it's in, it may be in the future, and then again, it may not be in the future. There's a lot of stuff going on for our future here lately, but you read a blog and you just say, oh, wow, we're gonna lose Winn-Dixie to Aldi. I just wouldn't make that kind of, uh, assumption. I just wouldn't. I personally think Winn-Dixie's gonna be here, but we, we, you know, we didn't make a, a stink, uh, when the liquor store came in and took out a number of liquor stores around the area, Winn-Dixie did that. I mean, I think, you know, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't make a stink then. Um, and I can go on with the little things, but I just think that there's things that the government can do, and there's things that the people should be doing, and the people should be the ones talking. Well, if you wanna put a resolution in, that's, that's, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. With that, do we have other comments? Other comments, other, our public comment? Go ahead and get it.
I presented my comments.
I've got that, I've got that here. Would you, um, you wanna read it?
No.
Yes, we have a motion.
That's right. Set up the way then.
Uh, I need you, if you, you wanna come to the, to the mic.
But will you be reading it?
No, you can read them. I think you should read them. Um, but I mean, I'll be happy to, I will be happy to, Ms. Spicer, but you know, if you would, if you would like to read them, yes.
Yeah, it's good. Um, our rules of procedure say that written comments will be distributed. They haven't yet been distributed to everyone. Um, and that in general, if people want to comment to the whole commission, then it has to be shared to us or they have to read it.
Yeah.
I always heard that we weigh the votes, but if she's willing to read, then that's simple.
Oh, like? The, yeah, there you can, then. You introduce yourself, please.
Oh, yes, Ms. Moore. Um, I'm Melinda Spicer. I live here in Crescent City at one-twenty Lakes Grove Drive. And I've been here for over twenty years. I've watched as Winn-Dixie's quality went down, has gone down. Um, sometimes it goes back up. Depends on the economics, I guess. But, um, right now, we have no pharmacy. And I don't think that if we kept Winn-Dixie, that the pharmacy would come back. We haven't, um, had heard anything about that. Um, we don't have, uh, we don't need such a huge liquor store. When tourists come in, they buy their beer and their liquor. I think that's mostly for the tourists or something. We would need ten thousand different kinds of bourbon.
That's right.
Um, I don't, uh, I'm trying to list the pros and cons because Winn-Dixie have Aldi's. Winn-Dixie does not encourage self-bagging. Aldi's encourages yourself bagging, which to me is environmentally better. And then all these plastic bags, um. They do have, uh, Winn-Dixie has many choices. And Aldi's has limited amount of choices in dry goods. But, uh, even though Winn-Dixie has more choices, they're mostly generic now. They're not like they used to be, good quality stuff. Um, Winn-Dixie has fresh hot dally meals and cold cuts. Aldi's does not, but it's, their food is fresh and better quality and lower prices. They have, Winn-Dixie has expensive veggies, not always better and not always ripe. Winn-Dixie has lower prices on their vegetables and their meats, their fish, better prices and quality. Um, Winn-Dixie has many breads and, um, dairy, uh, choices, but not necessarily healthy. Um, I think I find Aldi's breads better quality. And there's lots of different options with them. And Winn-Dixie has many liquor options. Most, most wines are most, more expensive, but not better. Even though Aldi has no, uh, liquor, they do have lots of wines and they're, they're very inexpensive. Sometimes my husband loves them. And Winn-Dixie has a lot of the shampoos and the dry goods that, uh, Aldi's doesn't have. So I, I won't miss that. A lot of times I'll go into Winn-Dixie and buy a long list of things that I need. And then I come home and find, oh no, they overcharged me for this and that. And I have to go back and refund. Or even, even as I leave the cashier off team's face, they go, they overcharge my associate. Oh, well, you have to go over to the customer service. And that's such a drag. I've never had to do that at Aldi's. And, uh, too bad we can't get Publix in here, because when I go to Publix, I feel like a queen. They actually smile at you when you come in. And if you're wandering down the aisles, they say, can I help you? So I don't think I'll be missing Winn-Dixie that much. And if I do have to go to a larger grocery store in Wallaca or the land, it's certainly not gonna be at Winn-Dixie. It's gonna be at Publix. So, when I can't get it at Aldi's, then I can also get an Amazon or Kroger delivery and shop at a Publix. I would never shop at Winn-Dixie again. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We have anybody else who would like to comment? Please come forward. Don't be shy. State your name and your address if you will, please.
Well, my name is Cynthia White Miller. And I, I don't live in the city, but I live in McAllen. So I know, I, you know, I know that. But what, what you just said, oh, I'm, I'm sorry. My address is one-fifteen Lakeside Lane, Crescent City. Um, but what you just said, I totally agree with all of what you have to say. The quality of Winn-Dixie has gone down. I live a, a block away from there, so I, it's very convenient, yeah, for me to go in there. But the quality has gone now. But the one thing, and, and Ms. Burton, you, you mentioned that the one thing that bothers me more than anything else, and I wish I would've said something when it came out, is that liquor store. Now, it's not so much the liquor store, but it's the glass that I have to stand in front of the registers and look at all that liquor. I hate that. The only thing that separates that from the register is a piece of glass. And I went in and I talked to the manager and many others there. Just put a beautiful mural up of Crescent City. Crescent City is beautiful. Put that mural up, cover it up. We don't have to look at it. To me, it's an eyesore. And when I go to Winn-Dixie, I feel like I'm in a liquor store instead of a grocery store. I'm sorry. And so that's my biggest concern about Winn-Dixie. Although I used to say, oh, I love my Winn-Dixie. It's so awesome. I loved when they did the remodel. I don't say that anymore. That with that liquor store, mostly because of the glass. I did other stores, other Publix and other Winn-Dixies, they had the liquor store, but it has a door. You walk through and block all around it or something that covers it up. You don't have to stare at the liquor store when you're in the grocery line, at the register. And I think about, I think about the families of Crescent City and my, our community. I think about the children who have to watch people buy liquor as that's happening. I think about the, the, you know, the young adults, the, the young families, the alcoholic, the alcohol, the one who has a problem with drinking. They have to stare at that. They're there with their soup and their crackers, and they have to think, do I wanna buy liquor or not? I mean, the, it's just such a, you know, it just bothers me that we have to have that there. And, you know, I, I think it, I think it's a detriment to the community, having the liquor store there. And I know this is not a meeting on the liquor store, but since it was brought up, I felt like I could bring it up. That, that glass is an eyesore. And just cover it up, and it would be better and improve on the quality of the store and the, uh, the product that you buy there. And so thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely. Thank you for coming today. Hello.
Hello.
You can state your name and your address if you will.
So my name's Janora Grantley, and I'm twelve oh four Habitat Way in Crescent City. And I've been a part of this town my whole life. So I happened to be born and a kid running around when Winn-Dixie was built. Because before then, I can remember Miller's supermarket. So Winn-Dixie is a full-running store that is needed in the community. I've had my first run-in in Palm Coast with an Aldi. And to me, it's a lower brand of a stable line. You can't even find an ATM in this store. Winn-Dixie serviced so many people, and when that pharmacy even closed, it took away so many jobs. And it took away a need for the community. You have a lot of elderly people here that can't get to Wallaca or can't get to the line. And they needed that as part of the store. So now you're looking at Aldi's coming in and shutting down the bakery, the deli and the meat department? It makes no sense. We need a running store here. And I pretty much love the resolution. I'll say that much. And I also feel like that if a meeting is gonna be ran, it need to be ran after hours. Because four o'clock is not a good time for the community to come in and voice their opinion. That's what I feel. But I definitely feel that we need a full-run Winn-Dixie here. And as I look at the jobs that it provides, and I look at the, the things, the items that we have to be able to go in. Some days I may not feel like cooking, but I can run over there to that deli and get me some fried chicken and take home after working for a long day, just coming in from McAllen myself, trying to make it here to this meeting. So I really feel like Winn-Dixie is needed. I have other people that wanted to come to this meeting, but felt like it was for city limits only and that county couldn't speak. But I feel like maybe we need to have another meeting and then actually after hours and bring their people from the community, from county, whether they live in the county or the city limits or even Volusia County to build and, uh, you know, pass this area. Because a lot of people use these stores a lot. I'm, I'm just saying.
No, thank you, thank you. And thank you for, for making it here. I, I apologize. We talked about that as, as far as a, a time. And, and possibly, um, that was something I was going to talk to the commission about, because this right now is for Crescent City proper. But, um, to see if the commission is okay with me reaching out to the other communities, um, to Wallaca, to their mayor, Pomona to their mayor, um, to Pearson to their mayor. And, um, seeing if we need to do something as, as a, as a group. Because I know they're gonna have those same concerns, or hope they have those same concerns.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Steve Cummings. I live in six oh four Lemon Avenue. Um, first of all, I would like to thank you guys for meeting on this. Um, I actually agree with Cynthia's, uh, Ms. Commissioner Burton with your stance. Um, however, I will say that where I differ is that we have elected you all to speak for us. And a weight of a resolution is not a denial of their business. We are not saying they can't come in. We, we are saying we would like for you to consider what impact this is going to have on us. I think being united as a commission sends a message to Aldi. Um, and I would humbly ask that you really consider by putting that on there and saying, you know what, this does impact us. This does impact our community. Not having these services, not having that pharmacy has impacted me. And I'm great, I, I, getting these back at the CBS is a challenge. That didn't happen until Aldi started to, until they bought up, um, Southeast Grocers. If there is a chance that our commission can sit and say, hey, we would like for you to reconsider what this is going to do to our community. Because I think what will happen is that the business is going to move into Wallaca. And it's going to open up businesses like Publix. It's gonna make them a much more attractive offer. And that's gonna, that's gonna hurt Crescent City in the long run, too. All those things, and like, Wallaca's already growing and it's like, the growth is, is, we'd like more options. And I feel like it only gives us less options. Larry and his staff do an outstanding job of supporting our community. You guys do a great job of supporting our community. You don't give head enough, you know, for all the headaches that you guys have. I just would like for you to consider, I, I actually am one hundred percent with you. We don't need to tell people how to run that business. I agree with that. But if we can sway them to say, hey, this really impacts us, I think that it's our job to, to do that. Not, not to put restrictions, not to say, okay, once that die has been cast, I don't want your Aldi in here. It's either this or nothing. I would actually stand with you and say, no, we're not, I don't, I'm against that. But in this stage of it, they really need to consider what the impact this is gonna have on our students, on our community, on all of the members of South Plutnam. And they do come from Northwest Volusia to come here. Um, it, it's just something that I would like for you guys to consider.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yes, sir. You wanna come?
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dan Dodge, and I wanna first say that I'm delighted that you brought this up. I was not aware there was any concern that we might lose the only supermarket we have in Brooklyn Peninsula. To me, it would make a, a huge impact on our community. I, um, you know, we're fortunate, we have one supermarket. We have one discount grocery store. We have one specialty food store, the Hispanic store. We have, uh, convenience stores, and we have a neighborhood market. To bring in another discount grocery store, really, we would, we would lose quality. Winn-Dixie brings quality to our community, our product. Now, I've been a resident here for three and a half years. I, elsewhere, I have shopped at Aldi's. They certainly do a fine job. Um, but I am proud of you here, um, this commission to speak of how much we appreciate and think of Winn-Dixie. Because that's really the issue. As Mary, you pointed out, it's not that we don't dislike it in Aldi's. It's just that we have a higher need for quality of product. During the time that I've been here, I've also appreciated the management and the staff of Winn-Dixie. Our Winn-Dixie has a great manager. I've seen him interact on a daily basis with his customer base. I greatly appreciate the relationship that he has with his staff and the quality of staff which he retains and attracts. Again, since my time here, the quality of the, of the supermarket Winn-Dixie has greatly increased. And I appreciate that. Without it, though, um, it would be a great loss. I, uh, I would have to go elsewhere to, to find the, the quality of product. Um, or, or shop at Kroger's online. Um, quite frankly, I prefer to pick out my product. Again, um, it's, what, what you're doing is letting them know how highly we think of it. And what, how important it is to our community as an employer, as a service base, and, and also for future growth. I, um, I also encourage that with the concept of having others in our community to speak out, other groups. I think it's very important. And to realize that there are, it, the other towns and cities in our peninsula are affected. And we should, we should also reach out to them. So I, I thank you very much.
Thank you. We have any other speakers?
I have a couple of observations based on, um, comments, and I appreciate each and every comment. I think it's very important for us to be informed as to what people in that community think. And I'm sorry this came up so quickly, but it came up quickly. So we're doing the best we can, right? Um, first of all, um, I was not a big fan of the liquor store, but that was Winn-Dixie's choice. Um, we, they have the option to do that. We can't control that. Um, I think there were some good comments made about improvements, but this whole thing, it's not really about, should we have Winn-Dixie or should we have an Aldi's? It is about, um, as, um, Mr. Cummings and Mr. Dodge alluded to, it's about the economic health of our community and making sure that we have that mix of economic options that are going to make us viable economically as a community. We want that mix, and that is something that every municipality that I know of in Florida, um, has paid some attention to. So, and this resolution is not telling Aldi's they can't come. It is explaining to both of these commercial institutions, um, the importance of a full-service grocery store to the economic mix in Crescent City and, and South Plutnam. And it did occur to me, it's very interesting. I don't know how many times the mayor or other commissioners you have heard, um, many times people have said, well, number one, um, some people who work here don't want to move here because we don't have enough full-service shopping options. This is, this is something that gets expressed to me quite a bit. Um, and as well, I don't know how many times residents have not approached me and said, you, and by you, they mean the commission, you need to get us a- you, and by you, they mean the commission, you need to get us a fill-in-the-blank, um, a retail store that sells certain products, um, a Panera brand, a certain kind of gas station or whatever. Um, did, you know, most residents have some understanding that the city commission has something to do with economic development. Um, we, we cannot go out and rope a specific entity, but we do have a responsibility to pay attention to what's here and maybe what we can attract. And I guess, um, these commercial organizations will do what they want. We're expressing, um, the impact on our community. And I hope that this will be the start of a larger community discussion and maybe more focused by the commission, by focus, I mean, making it consistent on elements of economic development and what will help us, doing what will help us. So, um, I just, I don't know, I just find it kind of amusing. I've been asked so many times, could you get us, the commission, could you get us a certain thing? Um, and we're just doing the best we can to make sure, um, that economically we have the right, we have the right under, understanding and anyway, to, I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Kind of like the second grader that recognized me. And she said, you're the mayor? And I said, yeah, she, you spoke to her? And I said, yeah, I did. And I said, are you excited about the McDonald's is about to open? And she said, I asked you for a chipotle. You know, I mean, so they, they do look to us and they, they hope that we, and we don't have any influence over that. You know, or specific, uh, specific ones, you know, um, but I just, and what you said, I just, oh, just always chuckle over that.
Right.
It's not, I really didn't have anything to do with, with that, but thank you.
But we, we do have a long economic development in my view, so.
We do.
So here we are.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Um, I do want to ask, um, Commissioner, Commissioner Lori, how are you over there? You good? You go to dinner? Commissioner Lori?
I'm sorry, I'm here, yes. Um, there was just one other issue, or one other thought that I had as you were reading the resolution. And that's, that One Dixie has for decades been a supporter of the Catfish Festival and of the Rotary Club at Crescent City. Um, they've been a very valuable partner and has helped us to be able to fund our scholarships that we do every year. So, you know, there's that, that function that, you know, is all part of the package here that would be an impact on our community. And I just really, um, hope that, you know, we can vote on this and support it. I think that it's really important that we at least voice our opinions for the community and for the city, um, just because we do have that responsibility towards our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, if I could. To me, I, I think, I mean, One Dixie is very benevolent in our community as are other institutions. Um, but I would, I would not necessarily want to add that specifically to the resolution. Because I, I think the overarching issue is the overall economic health of our specific area and not what benevolence a particular organization does or does not do.
And I'm not familiar, um, I, I thank you Commissioner Lori for that. I have to, I would say that as Commissioner DeVito, I am not familiar with Aldi and, and their community support. I am with Publix and One Dixie, but not with, not with the Aldi. So I wouldn't, I don't want to, um, put anything in here that would, you know.
Well, and as well, to me, um, some people use the term getting into weeds. Um, I certainly, I, I think the overarching issue is that it's the anchor, um, it's that anchor retail establishment. It provides the full-service grocers. And I would not really want to suggest that we like one store over another because they support this organization or local cause necessarily. I just think it's, it's an important service that we need.
The one thought that came to mind and it was part of the discussion we made.
Can I ask a question?
Um, if you, if you come to the podium, please. Please state your name.
Hello, this is Mike R, uh, one twenty, like, grow, drive Crescent City, Florida. Uh, two questions came up. Do you think that if we kept our One Dixie, that they were bringing the pharmacy back? Have we asked that question of them? And also have we compared the number of employees that Aldi hires as opposed to the number of employees that One Dixie hires? Maybe very equal, I don't know.
No, we talked about that earlier, so typically with their traditional, um, um, we have, I think we have about eighty-three. One Dixie is, is one of our margins, if not in margins. I think maybe the, um, rehab center has, has exceeded that, that they have, I believe, eighty-three plus employees. Um, the Aldi, their traditional store, I believe, employs, um, around thirteen, I was told.
Many?
Around thirteen.
Thirteen employees?
Right, if I could.
Not to mention the, Mark, I mean, when you look at those departments, they have department managers, which are higher paying jobs than a grocery store, yes.
Yeah, I wasn't able to speak to somebody with knowledge of the grocery business. And the figures, I mean, when you have, um, someone said it's, it's a different model.
It's a different, yeah.
Right, it's a different model and, um, the discount stores typically, um, their savings are achieved by lower hours, um, less selection. Um, and as well, far fewer employees. Apparently most discount stores operate on fewer than twenty employees. And that's just the, the model.
Kind of notice that when we see we have fewer, fewer tellers, I mean, or good retail people to check us out. That's all these machines, so. And I hope we get a pharmacy back, but I'm happy with the community pharmacy so far. Thank you.
Good, well, thank you. And I don't know, um, I, I know that when the pharmacy was closed by, when Aldi, when Aldi stepped in and took care of them. So they were the ones that closed the pharmacy. Not unless you're One Dixie, whether it's Southeast Grocers, that's my understanding, so. I don't know Southeast Grocers, what they're gonna do in those One Dixies that they're going to be able to retain. I don't know if they're bringing the pharmacies back or not because there might be some contractual issues. I don't know because they contracted the CVS and Walmart, if that's not for us, so. We have, anybody else?
Yes, yes, sure.
Um, I would like personally thank all of the residents and all of you that came in today and, um, for what's your opinion? Because without you all, we, we don't know where to take it sometimes. So, um, I'm very, I'm grateful that you all came in today. And, um, hopefully we can have another discussion because there's lots of things that we can accept that need to be created in, in our community. I, myself, again, was born here. I was here when they had lots of things here going on, that we had two department stores. We didn't have to go out town to get things. Um, if I needed that Easter dress, my mother went out to Hilda's, um, style shop, and she go over to Leon's. And we pick out that dress or shoes, whatever we needed. Uh, we didn't have to really go out town. It was, it was, there was a lot of stuff you never really go out. But somehow, things change. But, you know, we can always bring that stuff back here, you know. Whatever we want, whatever we desire, we can get together and do it as a community. And so, now that's why I'm just grateful that, that you all came. The next time, I think we can tell more people, change our time, and we can really come up with some good, um, ideas. I just like listening to the community because I think that, that's how we're gonna, we need to work together. We live here, we need to work together and get along and do what we need to do to make this, this town a better, one good city. Thank you.
Okay, we have no other discussions? We have a resolution in front of us, we have a proper motion in a second. We're ready to vote, Lori. Give your vote. Cindy Burton?
Nay.
Commissioner Alana Moore? Commissioner BJ Lori?
Am I allowed to vote?
Sure, please. I don't, I don't believe he's allowed to, but I was.
No, I was not allowed to vote, no, I was.
Yeah, he's not allowed to. But he should be part of the, he can be part of the discussion.
Thank you.
Commissioner Annalisa DeVito?
Hi.
Karen Myers?
Hi. Thank you all for, for coming out today. Um, we greatly appreciate it and we're taking that into consideration. That's why we keep our other meetings at six o'clock. Um, and so if we meet on this again, and, and there might be a possibility that we will, we'll make sure, take that into consideration and give it a, um, play your time. Um, thank you again for everybody here today and just see what, see what this is.
Right, um, so you mentioned, Mayor, wanted to know, um, what the commission thought about your contact.
Oh, yes.
Other municipalities. Um, I thought Mr. Cummings had a, a very accurate take on that. Um, they might be concerned about this and they might be interested in being a competitive location or another established one, I don't know. Um, but I, I don't think it hurts to inquire.
You're, are you in agreement with that? Commissioner Lori? Commissioner Lori? Let's reach out to the other communities.
That's not, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you, it's starting raining here.
Uh, it's, us reaching out to the other communities, um, surrounding communities and sharing with them the resolution.
Yes, I believe that that'd be very important. And we can share with them and they can ask one themselves.
And make that determination that day on the day. Commissioner Burton?
Well, you know, I'm gonna agree with sharing the resolution, but I certainly agree with reaching out to the other communities to get your input. And I, again, I'm stressed that it belongs with people. You get out there, write letters, make phone calls, do what you gotta do. You know, we're just five people, it's a resolution, and I hope it's not like a lot of things that end up on people's desks. There's a file for those things. It really, the, the voice that you have is much clearer than us five.
We have also, um, commissioners, we've been, um, contacted today by Jacksonville News. So Channel Six, or Four, or is it Four, it's known as the Four, Jacksonville Four. Um, and they're watching today also and, and wanted to know about, um, the meeting and the resolution. And they're probably gonna reach out again. Um, so I just wanted to give y'all a heads up. I spoke to, um, one of the reporters today and, um, she was trying to learn a little bit more about One Dixie and, and what it does for our community, so.
So, well, and I think Commissioner Lori made a really, a very good point. Um, if you, if you look back at the last ten years and, um, we have, there's been economic contraction partly due to COVID. Uh, we've lost retail establishments, we've lost restaurants. Um, and some of that was due to COVID and some to larger, just larger economic changes in your life. Um, but I think it is our responsibility to see what we can do to, um, achieve economic revitalization. And I also remember, um, since I was a little girl here with my grandparents, um, I remember shopping on Central Avenue and up and down, um, up and down Summit. And yes, there, I still, I still have, um, I still have some advertisements and some clippings in my house and a box from Holdus. And yes, we, so economic revitalization, yes, that's something we need to be concerned about. So thank you, Mayor.
Um, when they do reach out, I just wanted to make sure that the commission is aware. So I'm not speaking out of turn, um, if they ask for an interview on, for the news. Um, I want y'all to be aware of that. We have, we have the resolution. We covered the resolution, I just want to make sure. Um, okay, with that, we're gonna move on to our next, um, historic rant, the Miller Middle School. Thank you all very much. Thank you, thank you. Did I cover everything up in the house? Oh, yeah, because it's.
You know, she, she really just beat that rain.
That's like me yesterday.
Yeah, that's right.
Mayor, could we take a five-minute break? We can take a five-minute recess. That'd be great. We can take a five minute, yes, that'd be great. And. Hey, anybody go ahead? We convene our meeting, our special meeting, so right now we have one in the fourth round.
Um, yes, Mayor, we have Paul Weaver from Historic Associates, um, attending the zoom. He's going to speak on the topic of a grant for the Miller Middle School property.
Okay. Um, wait a minute, I have a question here. So, originally the idea was to discuss a special categories grant, the large grant for physical renovation, is that the one Mr. Weaver's going to talk about?
You can ask him that, I believe this is pertaining to, um, increasing the registration.
That's, that's the small matching grant, but when, so I just want to get some clarification. When, when we set this meeting, the idea was to talk about the possibility of applying for the special categories grant, or do we have information about that?
You mean the, the. Have you heard about this? Yeah, multiple times for, for that, and the discussion's open for you to discuss, um, whatever grant you'd like to.
Okay, well, anyway, the, um, then I'm sorry, then the second issue was brought up about the small matching grant to increase, um, I guess, to redefine the, uh, National Registered District. So that's what Mr. Weaver's been speaking on. Okay, just want to make sure I have the right grant.
Yes, my, my instruction from, um, previous instruction from the DRC was to reach out to R E G as well as Mr. Weaver. Mr. Weaver replied, um, this is his recommendation for a grant that we can move forward on for the, um, Miller property or the one that he recommended, and then R E G had their recommendation and also referred us to a grant writer who specializes in, um, historical grants. She has Jack to return and, um, I do now.
Okay, okay, so we're on the small matching grant.
Yes.
Got it, okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So with that, you turn it over to Mr. Weaver.
Yes.
Mr. Weaver, first off, thank you so much for your patience, um, for being, um, as we went through that first item of business, and with that, we're going to turn it over to you.
Mayor, Mayor Myers, can you hear me?
Uh, we can, there.
Okay, uh, yeah, I, I, again, I would introduce myself, Paul Weaver, by Milton Street, St. Augustine, Florida, and it was very interesting, because we've got a Wind Dixie very close to me that's going through a lot of the same issues, so I enjoyed that conversation. But, uh, I'm here today to, uh, speak about a small matching grant, and I apologize partly Memorial Day got in the way, but I, I drafted out the application for, uh, the commissioners to review through, uh, uh, the active city manager, and I know I talked a little bit with Commissioner Lori and gave a cou- couple of comments. But basically, um, we are, uh, drafted this out to update the, uh, existing Preston City Historic District, which believe it or not was done nineteen ninety-six, so thirty years ago. And, uh, a lot happened, uh, since then, particularly in the post-World War II period, and so this application would address that period. And, uh, the theme of this, I guess, was the George Miller, uh, Miller, Miller Middle School. Uh, and this grant application will directly impact on that, because the original high school was built in twenty-seven in the Jim in nineteen, uh, thirty-six, but much of the complex, particularly auditorium dates from the nineteen fifties, as things stand right now, uh, that part of the complex is not considered historic. So, we would update that information and also, uh, bring in, uh, information about, uh, the rest of the city built in the post, uh, World War II period up until roughly nineteen seventy-six. Uh, so it's a, it's going to be a, a ready grant, there would be no match on the part of the city. Uh, I, I added the rest of the amount at this point at fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so, uh, again, we drafted that out with the commissioners to review, and I know, uh, Commissioner Lori, I think he has a couple of questions, so, uh, I don't want to take a lot of your time, but I'm here pending questions simply about the grant application.
Yes, Mayor, I do have some questions, but I can barely hear Mr. Weaver. Does anybody else have a problem hearing?
I'm, I'm okay.
I can barely hear you too.
Okay, Mr. Weaver said, can, can Mr. Weaver hear me better now?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I'm talking as close to my mic as I can, but, um, I'm finding it seem very hard to hear, and then some members of the audience raised their hands and seemed to say they couldn't hear very well.
You might want to come up, you might want to come to the front row, or even pull your seats up closer if you'd like. I mean, I think you're a captive audience right now, I don't see anybody wanting to leave in this.
Thank you.
But, Mayor, I do have a question, okay? Okay, so, Mr. Weaver, essentially what you're saying is, um, and thank you very much, you're saying that you would, um, write this grant at no cost to us, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and that is certainly very kind of you to do, um, just, uh, just to give you background, you've met me before, I'm a member of our Historical Society and, um, I'm very concerned about historic preservation. Um, but, and since, um, I really don't understand how this process works completely. Um, when you say you'll write a grant to update our National Registered District, does that mean that you will be sending paperwork in to the Department of the Interior to update our, to redesignate our historic district, does that affect the end result of the grants?
No, we're, we're doing the grant to actually do the work.
Okay.
So, uh, you would apply and, uh, hopefully you're funded, and this would, uh, this would, uh, money would be used, similar to what you're doing now with the survey update.
Okay.
You hire an outside consultant, and you can't, you can't pre-select anybody, but, uh, we're doing it right now kind of as part of the services for the survey update. That's going to be one of the recommendations in our final report. Uh, so, uh, we would have an opportunity when you, if you, when, if you get the grant, to put in a proposal to do that, to do the work, but this, right now, is a grant application.
Right.
It's not, it's not to do, actually, to do the work to update the National Register.
Right, I just, can you repeat that? I, I did not hear none at all.
And it's a grant application to complete it? I heard that part.
Yeah, it's a grant application, it's not to do the actual work on the, uh, National Register update.
Okay, but you would, um, you would be writing the paperwork that would be potentially submitted to do the Historic District update, is that right?
That, that is correct, but I would do it through the city manager, uh, similar to, uh, what was done last year, uh, for the, for the survey, uh, update that we're working on right now. It would be, it would go through the, the city manager, and I think, uh.
Then, um, that it wouldn't have any conflict, because you were instrumental in helping get, you know, us prepared this grant, so that was, that was just my, my biggest concern. Okay, so, you have any other questions?
I'm sorry, I'm having, I'm freezing up a little bit, I'm having trouble here.
Okay, no, I just, I was just saying, um, I just wanted to make sure that, um, that since you were instrumental in helping prepare the grant, that you bid on the grant, if we were awarded it and you did, you bid on the project, that there would not be any conflicts. That was just my biggest concern. But Commissioner Lori, it sounds like you're helping, you're going to help this with Christina Marie?
Yeah, yes, I have planned on it and I've discussed it with Christina, I have with Paul. Um, you know, this would be the third year that we're doing this grant, um, or applying for this grant. Right now we have one that's in progress, we're waiting for the funding. Um, the one that we did last year is what Paul's currently working on, so, um, it's not, we don't want to let it buy up. And it also won't actually be funded until July one, twenty twenty-six. So, it's, uh, you know, a whole long process that it takes. If you can hear me, and I, I think that, that lighting outside is definitely, actually, you're in in my own, so.
Right.
I can.
Okay.
Trouble with the condition. Yeah, me, me as well.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner, for a question?
I, I guess we're going to need a question, okay. Um, I would like to know that we authorize our, then our city manager, um, to apply for a small matching grant, uh, from the Division of Historical Resources for the purpose of updating our National Registered Historic District.
Can we have a second? Questions? Do we have a second? Okay. I, I, I don't know, I was asking if anybody wants to say, I forgot the motion.
So, this is a matching grant. I sound very loud, kind of like that. This is a matching grant of fifty K. And.
It's not a matching grant.
No, it's not, it's a, no.
Well, I think it's called, the name of the grant's called Small Matching Grant, as I understand it, but we as a, since Christina Marie's memo, as an R E D I community, we don't have to match.
We don't have to match, we haven't had to match.
Because I have a core match in fifty K, I want to, you know, work on.
No, we haven't had to match on the other one either.
Yes.
Uh, but I think the title, uh, the title of the division, they have the special categories for up to one million, and then they have what's called the Small Matching Grants. So, uh, for up to fifty thousand, and that would be the one, that's the one that is currently being used to update our survey, and that would be the one that we would apply for, and the purpose, there's a lot of different things to do with it, but the purpose would be, um, to update the National Registered Historic District.
Okay. Okay, so we have a proper motion in a second, do we have any further discussion?